January 15, 2019. Please stand for the invocation led by Pastor Ronald O. McCants, retired elder of the United Methodist Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty and holy God, our protector from evil, our sustainer with life subs for living, for in you we live and have our being. The Psalmist declares in Psalm 145, verse 18, "The Lord is near to all who call on him, to all who call on him in truth." With grateful hearts we ask for your blessings upon our city council, our mayor, departments, businesses, schools, and colleges, religious places of worship, other non-profit organizations, and all citizens. Thank you, oh God, for your grace, your mercy, and justice. God of our ancestors, we petition your intervention in our federal government shutdown. This impasse of a dilemma is adversely affecting citizens within our city, state, and nation. It is painful to some and a hardship to many. We ask you, oh God, to cause the needs of the workers, who are essential in your eyes, to be supplied. Create a God blessed them with their needs for housing, food, health care, and transportation. Bless the farmers to maintain crops and livestock for our nourishment. Bless especially our babies and children during these difficult days. Eliminate the heavy burdens of stress. Remove the wall of dissension and make a highway to peace and love for all of us. Help us live as one nation under you, oh God. Vine maker calls us to apply Martin Luther King Jr.'s pathetic words to our vision. Use us, God. Show us how to take who we are, who we want to be, and what we can do, and use it for a purpose greater than ourselves. Enable all of us to strive to answer life's persistent and urgent question, what are we doing for others? Gracious All-Powerful God, open the hearts, minds, and duels of our government. Engrave in our actions King's words, the time is always right to do what is right. Grant us the courage that is and inner resolution to go forward for the good of all citizens despite obstacles, building dikes of courage to hold back the flood of fear. And then most holy Creator, God, let Reinhold Niebuhr's serenity prayer abound in many hearts. Grant us these surrender to accept the things we cannot change, courage to change the things we can, and wisdom to know the difference. In your everlasting holy name, amen.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pro call, Vice President Manzi, Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
At this point, do you want to make a motion to...
I'm going to appoint Councilman Richardson as temporary chair.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Councilmember Richardson, you will now chair the meeting.
Thank you.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
On behalf of the council, we welcome each of you to our official business meeting. These are our rules and procedures. Going to ask first of all to turn off your cellphones and all noise-making devices. If you're called to speak to the council, come to the podium and speak in the microphone. Stick your name and address for record. When speaking, always address the chair. No person speaking can debate with the chair or any other council member. You will have five minutes to state your business. At the end of four minutes, a buzzer will sound indicating that you have one minute left to wrap up your discussion. You are to be seated when you finish speaking or when your five minutes are up. Madam Clerk, we are ready to proceed.
Approval of minutes of the meeting of January the 8th.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass.
Communication from the mayor.
Good morning. How's everybody?
Good morning.
Well, I'm going to step up to the chair and join Chairman Richardson, and we have a very special joint announcement that we want to make. Okay?
Whereas Reggie Copeland, a friend and mentor to each of us, and more importantly, a great friend to our great city, will marvigary momentous occasion when he hits 90 years young tomorrow, January 15, 2019.
Whereas he played a pivotal role in our city government as District Five's councilman for seven terms and both vice president and president of the council, where he earned a much deserved reputation as a true public servant, putting the city first, and whereas...
Whereas his commitment to the city has always gone far beyond the bounds of his own district, as is evidenced by his vision for our new thriving downtown entertainment district and many more projects that would not have been possible without his foresight and confidence in our future. And whereas, we are grateful that this same commitment pushed him and us, his colleagues on the council for many years, to work more as a team for the good of our citizens and better steward of our city.
And... Whereas, his loving family is an instrumental piece of great man, including his wife Jean Copeland, four sons Reggie Copeland Jr., Lee Copeland, Riley Copeland, and Russ Copeland, and one daughter, Gal Phillips, grandchildren and great grandchildren, and...
Whereas he has illustrated his faith as a charter member of St. Pius X Catholic Church, where he was elector and usher, member of the parish development council, and past president of the PTA at St. Pius Catholic School. He has guided, this has guided his life's work, and whereas...
His long career, which includes being a veteran of the Korean War, a member of the management at Alabama Power Company for 24 years, president of the Copeland Agency, SaaS healthcare for many years, and a national-recognized collegiate basketball official for 25 years on the SEC basketball officiating staff, is still going strong, although for our colleagues' sake, hopefully, he will not make another run for office.
Now therefore, we, the members of Mobile City Council and the mayor, do hereby proclaim when we meet January 15, 2019, as Reggie Copeland Day. So what we want to do, we are concerned about y'all being able to sing, so we want y'all all to stand up and say, "Happy Birthday Reggie." One, two, three.
Happy Birthday Reggie!
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And we do have the official proclamation that we will send over to Reggie and his family. Thank you all very much.
We really didn't want to be judge-judging about your ability to sing. It was our ability to sing that we were worried about. Okay. Happy Birthday Reggie. At this time, I'm going to ask Officer Nix to please approach the podium and just face the crowd. This is the second time that Officer Nix, excuse me, I'm going to face the council, I'm sorry, officer. That he has been here since to receive the Officer of the Month recognition. He received it in 2016, and he's now received again for the month of December. He's been on the MPD for eight years. Presently, he's serving in the second precinct, and the information reads that on December 5, 2018, Officer Nix was joined by Officer Gaines responding to audible alarms on Old Passegula Road in Beat 23A. Upon his arrival, there were no alarms sounding in the area as the officers cleared the call. But like a lot of policemen who intuitively, something tells them to go back, he had knowledge of the location, and he went back to the area. He entered the secured gate by crawling underneath it, and walked the property, discovering approximately five large 18-wheeler trucks open with the dome lights on. Officer Nix then discovered an 18-wheeler stuck in the mud, loaded with batteries, occupied by a subject who was trying to steal the battery and the vehicles. Subject was placed in custody. The female subject was charged with five counts of unlawful breaking and entering a vehicle and theft of property first degree. In total last month, Officer Nix answered 63 calls for service as a backing unit on 29 calls, and Officer Nix had 14 felony arrests and five misdemeanor arrests, and wrote eight traffic citations during the month of December. I'm congratulating Officer Nix. A little later on the agenda this morning, the city council will vote on incentive package for the Airbus, the new foul for the construction of the A220 program. The city has committed, subject to the council's approval, $400,000 annually for 10 years. That's tied to a $210 million investment that will be made in the facility and the creation of 432 new jobs in the city of Mobile. We feel this is a good deal for Airbus, and we think it's a good deal for the city of Mobile. I would remind you that it was only six years ago that we were not building any airplanes, and today, we are building one of the world's best-selling jets. And with the addition of the A220 Mobile bill, we'll continue to be recognized as an aviation construction, big airplanes, and we will be well on our way to becoming the fourth-largest aviation-construction city in the world, following Toulouse, France, Hamburg, Germany, Seattle, Washington, and then Mobile, Alabama. So this is a very exciting time for the city of Mobile and a great opportunity for us to continue an ongoing relationship as Airbus continues to look at Mobile as a shining star and an opportunity for the future. On another note, today at 12 o'clock, I will be introducing Shonda Smith. She's the new senior director in charge of Parks and Recreation. I will be making that introduction at the Seals Community Center, at which time we will give everybody her background, but anybody that's interested in meeting Shonda, I would encourage you to join us at Seals Community Center or look at the news tonight, but we are very excited about what we think she will bring to the table when it comes to Auction Rec Department. And that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Yes.
Mayor, since you were talking about the Airbus and Bombardier parts of our agenda today, would you introduce our guests who we hear from, Airbus? I know they're almost like family, but I wouldn't mind introducing Guy.
So Guy Hicks, would you please stand? Matt, would you please stand? So these are the two gentlemen that are in governmental affairs for Airbus around the world, but their favorite place to come is Mobile, Alabama, right Guy?
That's right.
All right. Well, we're delighted to see y'all here, as we have the groundbreaking tomorrow for the A220 foul. So thank y'all.
I would just like to add this comment regarding Airbus, for the benefit of those that's not with us today, just looking at it from TV. There are many people, many persons employed by Airbus that's currently coming to us from other states and other counties to fill those positions over there. In the contract that we're going to vote on today, we make sure that there is a specific clause for Airbus to give first preference to those citizens living in Mobile. And we would say to those other counties and states that if you want to participate, put your money up. We're putting out $4 million. Put your money up if you want to participate. We would like for Mobile to have first preference to these jobs. So I just want those people that's listening to us within the city of Mobile, we are looking out for you, because you're the one giving us these million dollars.
Adopt the agenda. So moved.
So I got them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, it's passed.
Appeals? Request for waiver of the noise ordinance at 3750 Moffett Road on February 2, at 172 South Georgia Avenue on February 9, and at 1131 Dolphin Island Parkway on February 17.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The pass.
Public hearings. Today's a public hearing to rezone property at 5205, 5225, and 5245 Business Parkway from B5 to I1.
Is anyone here today to speak for or against any of these? If so, come to the podium and give us...
It's just a rezoning.
Ward Henneker with Alabama Power, 600 North 18th Street, Birmingham, Alabama, 35203. Obviously, we're the applicant. Thank y'all for taking the time for this. Primarily, I'll just kind of go over what we're doing here, which is rezoning it into an industrial, an I1, which kind of more fits the entire area. I know, Councilman Williams, this is your district. And try to get it zoned into that so that we can build a new crew headquarters there that also allows for a storm staging area, which has been an issue for us in this area, Alabama Power, finding the necessary space to have the equipment and the materials, mainly the materials, to provide storm response. This is, you know, gone before the zoning with recommendation. Y'all have seen the packet, so primarily, if y'all have any questions or concerns, I am here to answer them. All right. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
All right.
The hearings concluded.
If there are no further persons to speak, that concludes the hearing.
Today is also the public hearing to determine if the structures at 2071 Clinton Street, 2073 Clinton Street, 621 English Street, 309 Irwin Street, 864 Lucky Avenue, and 1014 Dolphin Street are public notices and order them abolished.
Are there anyone here today to speak against any of those matters that was raised? If not, that concludes the hearing.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Anise Petway.
She's here. Ms. Petway, if you'd just give us your name and address first and just tell us what you're...
Good morning. Anise Petway, 3208 Winfield Drive East, Mobile, 36695. And I'd like to speak about the ravine in the Winfield subdivision of Solley Road in Mobile. I have appealed to our homeowners association concerning the ravine that runs directly behind our home, and their attorney has corresponded with me to let me know that it's not in their purview to address the situation. So then I have also, since 2016, addressed the city for resolution to this same occurring problem, and the city has said they've sent out a representative to address the situation, and again, it is not their responsibility. My husband has spoken with the developer of the subdivision, Mr. Joe Benson, and he too, has declined. That is his responsibility. So at this point, I'm not quite sure who's responsible for rectifying the situation, but it needs to be rectified immediately, as my personal home has been flooded, and I have FEMA claims abroad with me, four FEMA claims today, and out of pocket, I've done about four to five claims where I've paid, you know, right out of my pocket. So we do need resolution to the situation sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I could comment.
Yes.
And I did pull all your SROs, so I know you've been trying to work with the city. Everybody's pointing the finger, you know, to say whose responsibility, and I would hope perhaps if the administration would sit down with the plotted maps, because this neighborhood is not that old. It's 1996 or maybe shortly prior to that. It's not an ancient neighborhood by any means, and there's been development near on both sides since that time too. So I don't know exactly where that water is coming from, if it's street water, if it's coming from neighborhood backyard water. But in speaking with you last week, we talked about your senses that you feel the ravine is not deep enough or wide enough to hold the flow of water. Okay. Could I request that the administration raise those maps and look and see, because we've got the developer of the subdivision saying it wasn't anything that incorporated into the association, and the associations know. I don't know if their map has an easement and a level of response. I have no idea. So I was hoping there could be some kind of process where all of the parties sit down, because I'm sure nobody wants to continue not dealing with the problem and finding out what the solutions could be.
Mr. Richardson, I'd be happy to respond.
Yes.
This neighborhood is like many. There are public facilities or city drainage facilities, in this case, underground piping and inlets, that take what you just derived as city water, or street water, which is what that collects and then is transmitted in the gutters and then into the drainage facilities, and usually through the neighborhood into an outfall somewhere. Those are accepted and maintained by the city, and if there's a problem either with the facility itself, you know, if it fails, then that's something the city fixes. If a drain inlet becomes clogged, the city doesn't, you know, routinely review these, but if a homeowner calls or an HOA officer calls, then the city will clean out those inlets. However, developers also put many drainage facilities into the neighborhood itself that are designed not to collect and dispose of city water, but to transmit water from private lots, either into the city facilities or somewhere else. Those are not the responsibility of the city. If they were, of course, we'd not be able to take care of all of them in the city. And so there is a division of responsibility, one city ownership, the other personal responsibility by individual homeowners. I'm not sure what has caused the most recent SROs that you've looked at, but if they have to do with clogging the city's inlets or a problem with the piping, that is squarely on our shoulders, and we will take care of that. If it's an issue of the private facilities that the developer developed, not having been designed wide enough or deep enough to carry water, that certainly is not the city's responsibility. Primarily, it was the developers. Now, I don't know how long, you know, that responsibility lasts.
Usually, it transfers to the HOA.
Yes.
But the HOA has clearly gotten their legal department, you know, their legal outreach to correspond, and they say it's not in their inventory. There is a pond directly across from your home that the neighborhood could maintain, correct?
Right.
Does that flood over and come into your drainage?
No, it goes underground to that particular pond. So everything that collects...
But does that back up and then flow over?
There's a, I guess, a culvert that has the pipe that goes under the ground that feeds into the pond that you're speaking of.
Does it go under the street?
Yes, it does.
So there would be some responsibility if there's any kind of clog up there. Would it be possible for the administration to check when the last time those street drains were vacuumed or looked at for making sure that they are flowing appropriately?
Yes. And there, I don't have it with me, but there is a record of having called out in the past and where there was responsibility for cleaning out the city's inlets. That has been done. Now, I believe it was a couple of years ago. If that has occurred more recently or may be a current condition, a call to our engineering department will take care of that. It is on their radar, I assure you. And our engineering department would be happy to converse with the homeowners about that.
That would be good.
So if I may ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In the event that it's not the drainage being clogged or anything like that, and that the design, then whose responsibility is that if the fact that the ditch is not deep enough or is not wide enough? Who then is responsible?
I'm sensing that that is your problem, and that would be a design problem, a problem that, you know, was causing either the design or construction of the subdivision. Those cannot become, you know, obligation of any party other than the developer. The city accepts and maintains facilities in the condition in which they receive them, but here, that would have to do with the underground piping and the inlets into the underground piping.
Did the city review plans as the neighborhood was being developed to say that there was adequate depth and length of what the developer was putting in? Is there, like, those engineering plans, whoever was the engineer, did they have to get that approved by the city in order to do that building permit moving forward?
I don't answer to that.
Okay. Well, again, if there's any historic information that would help the residents that are now having this ongoing problem, to see if there's someone they should be communicating with. They've tried the homeowners, they've tried the developer, engineering, and again, this is relatively recent in the scheme of Mobile, a 300-year-old city, so hopefully, some of these people might still be in place. And, you know, I just, I know their problem is real, and everyone they've reached out to, so at some point, something has to, you know, not keep flooding their home, whether they have to take the responsibility if their easement incorporates. And were you able to get a...
I was not.
Okay.
But I am looking into that.
Yeah. That would be really, really important, to see whether the easement is on your property and therefore some responsibility for, you know, the water and maybe other neighbors up the ranks too, that have a level of responsibility, if it didn't transfer to the HOA, so...
Okay. I will still look into that and hopefully...
Okay. Thank you. And I would hope that maybe someone from engineering about looking, when was the last time the city had cleaned out the drainage system that belongs to us, for making sure that that is adequate and flowing right?
Yes, that's an answer that we can get.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Okay.
Thank you.
Hold on, hold on. Hold on.
I know this isn't going to be any consolation to you, but we have issues like this all over the city of Mobile. And my, I've had a good deal of experience with it. And my experience is that we generally don't have this type of problem in the older neighborhoods of the city. Where we tend to experience it is where large subdivisions were put out and installed from, like, after the Second World War, four-four. And because Mobile, a lot of Mobile sits on flat land, the developers put these drainage ditches behind the houses and so forth to drain the, not to drain the street, but to drain the lots. And when, so whenever someone, one of my constituents contacts me with respect to one of these drainage ditches, the first thing I do is I keep a, as a matter of fact, I keep a big map in my office that shows me which ditches are maintained and which ditches are not city-maintained. And I refer to that first and then respond, either asking if it's a city-maintained ditch, asking the city to go out there and look into it and figure out what's the problem. But if it's not a city-maintained ditch, letting the homeowner know about that. So it's a problem we have all over the city.
Where would the administration recommend that we get evidence that this is not the city's ditch? I mean, do we have anything that says we're responsible for these things and not that, so that they can go back to wherever they are? I mean, there are residents of the city, and I know we're not going to necessarily offer them legal advice, but could we have someone that they can contact that could show them on a map where our responsibility is and is not?
Sure. So typically, that information is going to be found either in the documents where the purchase of the home, you're dealing with the mortgage, dealing, one of three places. Dealing with your mortgage and what easements you get with your home, it can be found there. And that's, you know, with the deed and when you deal with your mortgage. Two, with the developer, when you're handed over the documents for your HOA, that sometimes the information's there as well. And then, three, if we're looking at the actual developer's application to build the neighborhood, when they started developing neighborhoods, typically going to be in one of those three places, responsible for or not. Sometimes if it's built post-development, which is rare, it'll be in another document, but typically, it's going to be in one of those three documents.
And I would just say that, again, my experience has been that what the, what the city, if there's a question, what the city can do is send someone from engineering out there and look at all the outfalls on the street and see if they are draining into the ditch that's the question. And if there aren't any outfalls on the street draining into the ditch, then it's not going to be a city-maintained ditch.
I don't think that's the issue, is the rate of the water. We're on the bottom of a hill. And so the water is rushing, you know, they built the house behind us, there was a wooded area there. And so when they disturbed the soil, so now everything starts coming down the hill. And the rate by which the water travels, you know, the little shallow basin is not enough to sufficiently catch the water to allow it to go into the inlet down there, so it can go under the street and feed into the pond across the street.
Are the homes above you part of your neighborhood, or are they a different?
They are, yes.
So it's not a different subdivision?
It's not a different subdivision.
No, so they're all, that's part of Winfield that you abut in the rear of your property?
Right. And so the homeowners is not saying that they are not responsible for maintaining, just making sure that it's cleaned up. But in terms of actually, you know, dealing with the water issue, that's the problem. That they're saying that they deny.
I think what was made clear today, that if there is anything impeding the water, if the water stopped up in any way, the city would make sure it's moving. But if the issue is the retention system itself, it's not the city.
So we've been denied by everybody. FEMA is cutting us off, saying that we've had too many floods, so we're just caught, I guess.
But I think if you heard what the attorneys, you can find out who is responsible from one of those three places.
Yeah.
Just look at your deeds, look at your-
You're in Unit One, correct?
Yes, we are.
And the earlier units. Then the next level was not supposed to inflict any water, they had to hold theirs back. So it's looking, it's asking the homeowners' association of what is the responsibility of whatever unit you abut that you feel the water is coming in on, and also the plans that the city accepts or, and, you know, we might be a really good occasional spot for you to understand exactly where, and you see where the water's coming. I was thinking the water was coming from the pond that is maintained and coming over, but it's coming from your back.
It's from the backyard.
Okay.
It's from the back, and as I shared before, it comes, it's such a heavy flood that it comes through the house, and it actually, at one point, knocked the retaining wall out around the perimeter. It actually knocked that down, the force of the water. Yes, it's coming down the hill, and everything that comes, it culminates behind my house and comes through my house.
It's a rush, it's just a trickle.
So that new development-
Right.
Yeah, it's coming.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, it's all been the same developer to my mind, which I could be wrong about that.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for the city attorney, and that is that where do they go? I mean, if we're not yet, where do they go? Because there is a, from what's being explained, is a different amount of water being dispersed from the neighboring property, which is, I know against the law, I'm not sure whose law. So who do they go to? Where do they go? I just, this is a real problem.
Yes.
I think you agree.
So first steps, what we can do is we can actually pull the information from engineering. What we have, we can talk about and sit down and see whether or not it is a, whether or not the city maintained. I seriously doubt it because it's in the back of the house. Typically, and Mr. Davis can attest to this, that's not the case, but we can at least point to that information. Secondarily, what we can do is take a look at the documents that you have and reference what your developer has given you, your HOA documents. But it sounds to me like the water flow issues, the water flow issue in the, that caused the insufficiency of the ditch, not that this was a distinct problem before the trees were removed. That's another indicator. And we can probably sit down and talk about that, but it's probably not the best form for it, because it takes too much time.
Should they call our chief of staff to set up an appointment? How would you recommend, since they're here now?
Well, our chief of staff is actually sending an email to our engineering department, so we can get with you about as much. And I think they're already in contact with the engineering department.
Thank you.
So if you'll make sure that all parts, she's going to make sure you all-
Get their numbers.
Mr. Chairman? Yes? I have a question for the city attorney. I understand you said about deeds, or that's, would that be true for older homes also? Because I have some residents off of DIP from Gov Field to off of Riverside that have ditches, especially in the back of their yards. If the homes was built like in its sixties or fifties, would this true, too, that the ditch would be part of their deed?
It's all going to be case-by-case basis based on what the developer did and what, and who maintained it. There's always going to be documents specific to the easements. So who maintains what? I've seen it different, in different ways typically. You know, the city has said it will maintain streets, but not necessarily ditches. But there are certain ditches that are public use that we actually had built. That's always going to be on case-by-case spaces based on the documents at hand. There's no general rule for it across the city, depending on whether the ditch is on private property, public property, and who is the legal obligation to maintain them.
It'd be like really easy if the, or it's like a map that said, this is a city-owned ditch, because I know off of Gov Field, her name is Crenshaw, she's been calling me, you know, since I've been on council since, like, thirteen, fourteen. And the city go out there and spray and clean it. But, you know, then some ditches I know that is not belonging to the city. But again, these are older parts of Mobile. But it would be nice to have a map that just say, hey, this is city, or hey, it's not.
There, you can get one if you want to come to my, you can get one, you can come to my office, because I have one of District Five. You can get one for District, what are you, Three? For District Three, that'll, G.I.S. map will show you all the ditches in the district, and then the city-maintained ones, I think, are outlined in red.
Is it also on the city, is it on the city website? Because if a citizen called me, I can just prove it to them, just say, hey, you know, go to the website, you know, and that's the proof that it's not.
It's not on the city website. I think it's probably something specifically that you request from G.I.S. I think that's what Councilman Davis, because so many calls come in about ditches. So anybody who's requested that would typically get it. I think that's, there's probably no map out there right now that I know of that shows what you have. It could be, but that's a G.I.S. question.
It would be great that it be on the city website. Thank you.
Sharon Ingram.
I'm waiting. Hi, Mr. Kennedy. I'm Sharon Ingram, I'm representing-
Can you pull the microphone up?
I'm six-one, so. Sharon Ingram, I'm representing Alabama Vanine Trade and Economic Development Forum. And I stand before the council this morning because-
I got to give you an address.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're located fifteen-sixty St. Stevens Road, Mobile, Alabama.
Okay.
I stand before you this morning, we had some residents that had called regarding what was going on in their area, primarily Texas Street. But I just wanted to, if you would allow me to, I want to talk about gentrification, which is a, which we probably already know, process of renovating deteriorated urban neighborhoods by the means of influx of more affluent residents. Gentrification often shifts a neighborhood's racial and ethnic composition and average household income by developing new, more expensive housing businesses and improved resources, therefore, causing the tax base, tax structure to be increased by the residents that is there substantially. And I just wanted to just mention a couple of things here. On Texas Street, there's a lot of development that's going on, and some of the residents are alarmed. Texas Street, some of the streets that we were able to view was Charles Street, Tatum Street, Marine Street. So the medium income fair market value for those homes there, like twenty-one thousand five hundred, thirty-four thousand nine hundred. However, the new development that's there, those homes are being built and sold for two hundred ninety-three thousand dollars, and all of the lots have been acquired, they all have been put on the market for two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, or two fifty-nine, two ninety-nine. Case in point, one oh oh three Texas Street, fair market value is twenty-one fifty. Across the street, one oh, on one oh oh four Texas Street, it's being listed for two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So the residents now in that area are being alarmed by that type of development going on, because they're concerned, like, if my taxes go from five hundred dollars to five thousand, you know, dollars a year, I cannot afford it. So what we're concerned about is that these people are going to be pushed out by means of not being able to pay their taxes, or their homes are going to be sold, for whatever reason. So we're just trying to figure out what does the city plan to do regarding the gentrification. I know that's not the only area, but that's the area that we're looking at at this time. So I'm for the council to find out what do the residents supposed to do, or what is the city's plan with the residents that are there. So we only have five minutes, all that, Mr. Kennedy.
Are you, are you, are you saying that, are you saying to us that the lots were sold, were sold by the city?
No, the lots are, they're private owners. These are, it's a private owner, private owners that are, you know, purchasing the lots and remodeling the homes. The homes are gorgeous that they're remodeling, they're gorgeous. But the concern is, if the residents cross the street, the houses, you know, the FNV's only twenty-four thousand, and then one across the street that's being renovated, which we used to call the shotgun houses, two hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, that is a huge disparity. So it leaves the neighborhood in a pickle, because either they're going to have to move, or it's, like I said, their concern is that it's changing the entire ethnic and racial demographics of the area. So concern is that if it's in that area, then what's to stop it from going to other areas? And that's, that's a huge concern about, and that's the danger when we start doing gentrification, and that's what it appears that this is, the gentrification.
Well, I think if a person make an offer to a homeowner, say, I would like to buy your lot, and they purchase that lot, and it's zoned for residential construction, and they build a house on the lot, it's not that we don't have a law saying they can't do that. So would you, what would you like to see the city do? If you had a lot down there, if you had a lot down there, and someone wanted to buy your lot, and then they built a two hundred thousand dollar house on that lot, would you not, if you found out they was going to build a two hundred thousand dollar house on it, would you not sell that lot?
Well, that's, that's not, well, that's not-
I'm saying, what, what, what would you like the city to do?
But that's not the issue, though. The issue is, is that if this is allowed to fester in these low-income neighborhoods, what's going to happen to the residents? The residents are the one that's going to be placed. And this, to me, is purposely being designed to do that. So if you, there's no way that you can say, I mean, I know it's development, and you want to develop, you know, Mobile all over, but that, that's just a huge disparity, that's a hardship that's going to, that's going to be placed on residents that live in low-income areas, that all of a sudden, my house is not, is not, you know, they can't afford it. I'm thinking I'm paying, like the gentleman said, I'm paying five hundred dollars a year for taxes, and now the house next door, you have seven houses on one street, you only have two houses in this one particular street, that, you know, that the residents are living in, that's not two hundred thousand dollars, that's not even fifty thousand dollars. So you have seven other houses, all of a sudden, now the lots are worth two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. So.
Mr. Vice.
Yes, come on, Councilman Davis.
Ms. Ingram, are you a resident of the city of Mobile?
No.
Where do you reside?
Daphne.
In Daphne.
But I work, but my office is here.
Okay. And you're, is this two hundred Van Buren Street, is that where your office is?
No, the office is fifteen-sixty St. Stevens Road.
Well, what's two hundred Van Buren Street?
That's where I live.
In Daphne.
In Daphne, okay. The city of Mobile is engaged in a very active program to improve neighborhoods, eliminate blight, and increase property values. Am I to understand that you're opposed to that effort?
I'm definitely not.
Then, following up on Councilman Richardson's question, my, you know, my question would be, what would you like to see the city to do?
Well, I think, I guess that's my question, is that, are there any rules, not should there be, are there any rules at this time, or regulations against builders going in and buying these blighted properties and/or just remodeling, and calling the other residents that's living there for their tax, taxes to go to increase? Because they're, I mean, I know that, you know, they're not responsible for what the other, other homeowners, what they do, but you, I'm just looking at the broader picture here. Fifty thousand dollars, twenty-four thousand dollars, all of a sudden, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, whatever the price, three hundred thousand, and one of the houses that we saw, three hundred thousand dollars. So you have these residents that are there, so what happens when, because when the city do their assessment, their tax- do their assessment, their taxes are going to quadruple. So if they can't afford the taxes, then what? Then they're gonna be forced to move.
Well, Ms. Ingram, we meet here every week at the same time. You know how many of those citizens we're heard from? So if the city says, this builder, you can't build a $200,000 house over there, then they come over and tell this, but you can build, we're gonna be in more trouble, because they're gonna say we're picking and choosing, we can't-
That's not what I'm talking about.
This, let me just say, this is a free enterprise system, it's a free enterprise system. It is open to whoever with a license to do what they're doing. City can't dictate who, who will build on this lot. So you said, this place is voluntary, the only way, the only reason a person is displaced is that they sold their lot, or house. It's not like urban, urban renewal, where the government came in and moved a lot of people. Anyone that's displaced under the program you're talking about, they did on their own volition. They agreed to sell to somebody who came back and built. They're not being displaced, they elected to move somewhere else with the money that they collected by selling their house.
That's not the case.
How are they displaced then?
That's not the case, that's not what I'm talking, most of the people that are there are either long-time renters, or you have some, very few homeowners in that area, and they are concerned, so, I mean, we can definitely have them all here next week, if that's, if that's what you want to hear.
To ask us what?
The reason that they asked, the reason I'm here, to speak on behalf of the residents that did contact me, that they are concerned about their property values going up. And as, as, you know, just as a citizen, it is alarming that it's in a particular area that this is happening.
We, we don't deal with property values, that's the county.
Yeah, I was gonna mention, are you familiar with the Board of Equalization?
Yes, ma'am, ma'am.
And people can go, and if they feel that their tax, their property tax is too high, they can go and appeal to that board, there is, so there is something in place that's on the ground. I mean, that's been around forever. But most people, if they're renters, I hear what you're saying, but I originally thought you were talking about ownership, so you've changed the dynamic some, but owners usually benefit when the property on either side of them increase in value. It's usually very good for the homeowner. In fact, people look for that as a sign that the neighborhood is vibrant, sustainable, and most residents strive, when it's their biggest investment, to see those values increase. It's a good thing, at least from my perspective, but I hear what you're saying.
I'm not saying that, that it's not a good idea, it's always a good idea when you, when someone's coming in and investing in a neighborhood. It's always, but this is, is more than just about investing in a neighborhood. This is, this is about, just what I said, gentrification, and it's, and it's, to me, that's my observation, not anyone else, my observation, that's what it is. And if it's allowed, if it's allowed to fester in that neighborhood, then what happened to the next neighborhood? Next thing you know, all the people that live from that broad street, all the way, because apparently it seemed like it's following the, the dynamic of this new bridge. So if that's what it's doing, all the people that are, that's gonna, that's in the path of that bridge, that have been there 30, 40 years, all of a sudden now, they have to, they are being forced out, for the lack of a better word, because of the, because of-
How, how, how would you say, who are forcing their mind?
No, I'm just saying, if you can't pay your taxes, then-
Right, Chairman. Chairman, yeah, I have a question. Ms. Ingram, you said you have a business on St. Stevens Road?
Yes.
What, what type of business, you mind me asking?
Well, we are the Alabama Benin Trade Forum, we are, we are a state agency, we under, we passed a state law in 2003, and part of, of the state law, and what we do mandate is economic development, trade, it's a whole gamut of what we are allowed to do under the law. So when they, I mean, I can give you a list of all the things that we do, but economic development is one of them.
Okay, thank you. I kind of have an idea of what you're talking about. What I have been telling many of these citizens in District Three, especially around DIP, Daysville, Down the Bay, Oakdale, they said they'd be receiving these cards, we will buy your house, we'll buy your house. And what I tell the citizens, you know, don't sell your house, you know, you hold on to your house, do not sell your house, because I believe that their property value is gonna go up, especially if the airport moves to Brookly, you know, it's gonna, their property value gonna go up. You know, don't accept a couple of coins, you know, you hold on to your property, you know, hold on to as long as you can, do not just up and sell your house. My recommendation to you is to tell the residents along Texas Hill, you know, the same thing, do not sell your house, pay your property taxes, pay your property taxes. Nobody cannot come and just sweep your property, pay your property taxes. If you see a lot come available, or a lot that's, you know, had not paid the taxes, you know, get your organization and, you know, get some people, some investors, and purchase that lot. I do understand where you said there are some lots on there, it's $299, I agree, because I looked at Zillow last week and saw some properties that's high. But again, you can, you can tell me how much to list my property for, especially if I might think it, think it's $40,000 or $400,000. So your organization can get together and say, hey, we're gonna invest this property right here, you might have $299 across the street, but we're gonna list this right here for $50,000, or we're gonna list this right here for $20,000. You have the power, the residents have the power. And again, I encourage you to go back and talk to those residents, and tell them, one, do not sell their property, two, pay their property taxes, and three, if they see property available, go ahead and snatch it before somebody else does. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinance is held over. 64001, rezar property at 5188 and 5208, Mobile South Street, from B5 to I1.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
84002, I'm sorry, did you-
Sorry, was that 528 or the South Street?
Yes.
Do I need that?
Not unless you have any questions, right? Okay, go.
Okay, well-
84002, authorize the execution of the contract for loan guarantee assistance under Section 108 with the Secretary of HUD.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passed.
Resolutions held over. Would you like me to take all these together?
Please.
Or individually?
I think we're gonna table 09032.
Right.
Okay. 01031, authorize a master services agreement with McCrory and Williams for professional staying services. 01039, agreement with the Alabama Aviation Education Center regarding the Flight Work Alabama Education Center. 01040, approve special economic development grant agreement with the Mobile County and C-South U.S.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to speak on Resolution 01-39, and also 01-40. I am happy to say that I'm, you know, glad to, we'll be voting yes on these two resolutions, especially 01-39, the Alabama Aviation Education Center Flight Works Program. This has been worked on for a very long time, especially by Dale Herter from Airbus. She came several years ago, took my office and, and showed me the plans, and this is an opportunity for the schools in our area to have an idea of what aviation is all about. Many times, you know, kids don't have a vision, and the Bible tells us, without a vision, you will perish. This will give the students an opportunity to see what is aviation is all about, to participate in the aviation program. Airbus is a very proud sponsor of Gilley Elementary School, B.C. Rain High School, and Pillins Middle School. The principals at each one of the schools can tell you and testify how the grade point average of the students at those schools had came up because of Airbus, how much they participate in the school's programs. Especially at Gilley Elementary School, the kids there just be excited about aviation. And this Flight Work Program would give, give, just not South DIP area, but kids all around our city, an opportunity to see what aviation is all about. And if we invest into our kids on today, and we can be investing into our tomorrow for the city of Mobile, I am so proud to even say that, you know, sponsoring this, you know, Airbus had stated that they was going to start an apprenticeship program, where they would get students from the high school to come to the Airbus plant to start apprenticeship, and they would get paid. And if we get our kids in the mind of aviation, we get our kids in the mind of flight works, you know, we can keep our kids here, right here in Mobile, and we can grow our city. And that'd be a plus for not only Airbus, not only for Brookly, not only for, you know, the student, but for our city in whole. So I am very proud to say that I will be supporting both of these resolutions on today, because supporting is investing into our tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, in further discussion?
Yes, if I can add?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate everything about Flight Works that did evolve from a welcome center to something really good for our schools, and as a pipeline, and not to repeat Councilman Small, but it's really a good way to encourage the young people in our, in our school systems to look at a career right on the ground here in Mobile, that is quite a substantial career in airplane, flight works, building, and all the things that go along with that wonderful industry that this council is getting ready to support through the initiative of the contract for resources to go towards the new thou, that the groundbreaking will take tomorrow. Again, up to the city, when we talk about hiring local people, because that did ring my phone immediately, are people from the city of Mobile going to be hired? And the thing is, the best-case effort is in the agreement, I actually linked people to the agreement, so they could read that themselves, but it's really up to this city, the leadership and everybody, to make it the best city so that we can attract people, even newcomers, to want to live with us and be Mobileans by having a good school system, which this entity does not operate, but is very important, and hopefully they're changing and evolving into making that a better system for our students. And also, anything as far as the basic city services, making our neighborhood stronger, and that's prime statistics, drainage issues, sidewalks, infrastructure, so that the quality of life in our neighborhoods actually improve and attract people to stay in our, in our city, or to come to our city, and want to select Mobile as their place of reference, residents, rather. So it's exciting to partner, again, with Airbus as they continue to grow, because it's really good for all of us when we participate in that. And we know, we trust Airbus and the product that they are rolling out, and Mobileans that are a big part of it. So it's my pleasure to support it.
All right. In the further discussion? I like, I liked your statement, but, which, we trust Airbus. Any further discussion? If not, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We do.
We all voted in favor.
09002, reallocate monies from District Three discretionary account to the Mobile Police Department.
Move to table.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Anyone opposed? Not, it passed.
09034, reallocate monies from engineering and right-of-way and testing to professional surveying, master services, citywide. 09041, reallocate monies from miscellaneous citywide drainage, and from miscellaneous street improvements to Conception Street cobble replacement and McNally spoil removal deal, dis three. 21035, authorize contract with BFI Waste Services, doing business as Republic Services on Mobile for dumpster service various City of Mobile locations. 25036, accept a right-of-way deed and temporary construction easement for the McGregor Sidewalk Project Phase Two. 31037, amend the Pro Program 2018 Action Plan to change the eligibility type for the Dumas Wesley Sybil Smith Contract. 35038, authorize lease agreement with the William G. Buchanan Residential Share Trust for two parking spaces behind the Dolphin Street Central Events Building.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passed.
Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, 64003.
Said ordinance will be held over for one week pursuant to council rules.
Consent resolutions being introduced, number 03042 through 08064.
Motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of Resolution 003042 through 08066, with the exception of 37046, will hold over for one week pursuant to council rules.
Second.
45.
I think 45.
45.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right. Behold over 37045 and take 37046 for immediate consideration.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Let's rock and roll.
03042, appoint Ray Reddick Jr. to the Mobile Museum of Art Board. 03062, reappoint Louis Golden and William Guest to the Board of Adjustment. 03063, reappoint Derek Etchison to the History Museum of Mobile Board.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passed.
01043 and 31, I mean, 31043 and 310444, amend the memorandum, memorandum of agreement with the Mobile County District Attorney's Office to partner on the 2015 Saki Grant, and the memorandum of agreement with the Wright Crisis Center to also partner on the fiscal year 2015 Saki Grant. So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not, it passed.
4047, 048, 049, 050, 051, 052, are declaring the structures at 271 Clinton Street, 273 Clinton Street, 621 English Street, 309 Irwin Street, 1864 Lucky Avenue, and 101015 Dolphin Street Public nuisances and ordering them demolished. So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Did we, I'm sorry, did we, did we end up taking up 37046?
No, we laid it over for one week.
No, we, it was my mistake, but it's 37045 we laid over for one week, we needed to go ahead and act on 37046.
No, that was Manzi, we were gonna hold that up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we talked about it pre-conference.
Be good, be good.
There were some concerns. 4052, no, we did that one. 58053, 58004, 60055, and 08006, declaring weeds noxious, Group 1588, assess cost for removal of weeds, Group 1583, approve special bonuses, bonus to Officer of the Month, and approve purchase orders for the week of January the 7th, 2019. So moved.
Second.
Discussions?
Yes, please.
Yes.
On 0664, the, this was enacted by the cooperation from the City Clerk's office, recognizing it was a new compliance issue that we're working through, and applaud the effort of the entire City Council, but we pre-counciled, and this formal meeting to, to come to an agreement, to see this, not next week, with the vote the week after, in other words, a two-week delay, but now, in the spirit of all of that, I just would like to put my own thoughts out, is that we treat these purchase agreements that have gone through the process of, by state law, the same standard of CIP, which is if anything on the list is above federal- uh, the same standard of CIP, which is if anything on the list is above fifty thousand, that it may be subject to a delay, maybe. And we ask that when you consolidate, or when you're making that list, that we keep things under fifty on one. That will guarantee my agreement. And things over fifty, maybe just, uh, maybe a heads up to the council and say, can we, can we make this go? Uh, it's not our, in the bid awards process, not our intention to delay anything, but with, uh, with some cooperation, know about them, be able to share that with the public and, and move forward as quickly as possible. Thank you.
I would just say that if, John, I, I like that. I appreciate that. I like that. But if you put them all up there, we know that if it's fifty and less, uh, we can improve it, and we'll know that.
So in the future, we'll list them individually?
Yes.
Purchase orders. Okay.
Can, you know, you know, comment?
Yes.
I'm glad to see this. Um, and I know I tried to raise it at pre-conference. This is the concern that I had. We normally got this from, um, the purchasing department, and there was nothing in our Friday emails, so I was a little concerned. And thank you to our, uh, City Council Attorney, and, um, also to the council for approving this. Um, certainly, our goal is to have, um, greater transparency, um, which we represent that by being very public in what we do every week on behalf of city, um, residents with their tax dollars, and thank the, um, clerk staff for adding this. And I look forward to this being, um, as seamless and as accessible. Our goal is not to stop the city from operating efficiently and effectively. Um, I'll speak for myself. I never wanna be responsible if that is the case. So, again, thank you, council, for at, getting this added, and for the affirmative vote.
Any further comments? I would like to, um, comment to say that this is a, this is action that the council took. We were looking ahead. We don't want no issues, uh, with, with gasoline or anything like that. But my statement is, is, uh, with the administration that we've passed and ordering these contracts, and, uh, in, in, in carrying out the city's business, if you see where anything, any action we took that might cause a problem, and you carry out your responsibility, you bring that to us, and we will deal with it. Discuss it with us. Let us know, and, um, we would, we would, um, we would act on it.
Call for a vote.
Okay. Okay.
Vote.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It pass by unanimous consent.
CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time, twenty-one zero-five-six.
By council rules, this resolution will hold over one week.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, numbered zero-nine zero-five-seven through thirty-five zero-six-one.
By council rules, these resolutions will hold over one week.
Announcements?
Okay. John?
None, thank you.
CJ?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, today, um, we, is the, the day of Martin Luther King, Dr. Martin Luther King, ninety-ninety birthday. Um, Dr. King defined a beloved community as a place not only free for injustice, but a society that actively promotes and active of love, justice, and humanity in its legal, uh, political, and civic life. As we, um, in religious, spiritual, and martial aspects, it's sad to say that we will be celebrating Dr. King holiday, um, this year with a mass of unemployment imposed by a partial government shutdown, which affected many households and nearly eight hundred thousand federal employees. Uh, we know that when Dr. King was assassinated, he was in Memphis, Tennessee, um, fighting for the sanitation workers. And to me, it's a sad time to celebrate his birthday, dealing with the shutdown of, partially of our government. Um, historical civil rights museums and memorial will be shut down because of the partial shutdown of government, which is celebrating his birthday. Um, sad to say that on Monday, many people who had planned to go to many museums would not be able to go because of the partial shutdown. But I am glad to say that District Three will be representing very well this coming week and weekend, celebrating Dr. King's, um, birthday. On Saturday, the Gil Yard Boys and Girls Club will be having a neighborhood breakfast, and also be celebrating MLK Day event at the Sunny Cunningham Center this coming Saturday at eight o'clock AM. They are inviting all the citizens, not only just District Three, but throughout the whole city to come out this, this coming Saturday. Um, B.C. Rain dancers, they will be performing, so there will be several organizations from the University of South Alabama that will be honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Junior through motivational speech. Again, that would be this coming Saturday at the Sunny Cunningham Boys and Girls Club, sponsored by the Gil Yard, uh, Boys and Girls Club on DIP. On Sunday, there will be a kickoff rally, um, sponsored by the South Brookly United Methodist Church at the B.C. Rain High School. Again, this will be a gospel hip-hop concert that will be at six o'clock PM, inviting all the citizens throughout, um, District Three to come out this coming Sunday for kickoff of the MLK, um, Day of Celebration. And, um, there will be different hip-hop groups, uh, individuals that will be performing, uh, this coming Sunday at six o'clock at B.C. Rain High School. And finally, we will end up with a Day of Service on Monday at nine o'clock AM at the Hollinger Island Baptist Church. Uh, we are inviting all the citizens, especially in the south end of DIP, to come out, um, nine o'clock AM. Uh, there will be distributed several jobs going throughout the community, giving community service. Uh, there will be a group going throughout DIP picking up trash. There will be a group that will go into the Salvation Army on Barkin Boulevard to help the residents there at the Salvation Army to go through clothes. There will be a group at B.C. Rain High School painting the school. And there will be a group that's going throughout the community, cleaning up elderly, um, people or citizens, residents' yards. Um, some residents that cannot clean up their yard, there will be a group going, uh, volunteering cleanup yards. And also, seniors that cannot go out and pick up trash, or paint B.C. Rain School, or clean up yard, they are asking the seniors to show up, show up at Hollinger Island Baptist Church and to clip coupons. And they will be clipping coupons out to pass out to people that's in need, to try to give them some savings. Again, this will be on Monday at the Hollinger Island Baptist Church at nine o'clock AM. And they will conclude at eleven-thirty AM with a lunch sponsored, sponsored by South Brookly United Methodist Church. Again, not only just inviting the residents of South DIP, but inviting all the residents of District Three, uh, to come out on this coming, um, Monday, and Sunday, and also on Saturday. Um, this is year, my first year out of seventeen years, not one, in the annual MLK, um, parade. Uh, I have been invited to be the guest speaker at the, uh, MLK Program over in Daphne, Alabama, uh, on Monday at eleven o'clock AM. But, uh, again, um, I usually been marching the area the year for the last past seventeen years, but I am glad, I'm glad that Daphne had asked me to come over and be their guest speaker at the MLK Program on this coming Monday at eleven o'clock AM. And remember that District Three, oh, and we have a groundbreaking ceremony tomorrow, too, in, in Brookly. And we have some Airbus officials out there, and more jobs coming to District Three. Remember, District Three is the place where things are happening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Joe?
Yes, thank you. Um, I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome the new Parks and Recreation Director, Shonda Smith. I had the opportunity to meet her, and I hope, um, that she will have a very successful career here in Mobile and, um, working with Parks and Recreation, which is such a vital, vital part of what our citizens participate in. And I'd also like to address, um, the sincere condolences to the Birmingham Police Department on the loss of their police sergeant, um, and also wish well the other officer that was injured. I haven't heard an update, but I hope that, um, they are going to heal at a hundred percent. But again, we all feel that loss and wanted to just note it. Thank you.
Okay, Jane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of announcements. Um, this past week, I was able to meet with Shayla Beakco, Carrie Comanis, and others regarding Three Mile Creek Greenway, uh, particular the portion of the, um, route that will be in my district. This is the Three Mile Creek portion. So that goes from I sixty-five down to, um, the Japanese Gardens. So we are in the process now of planning some community meetings. There will be some stakeholder meetings as well, um, mainly geared toward people who, um, live next to where the creek is, as well as some of the organizations who are very active in the community. So we will be sending out information to those groups and to the community at large, so that everyone has a chance to learn more about exactly what the Three Mile Creek Greenway Initiative is all about. We will also have an entire, uh, plan, uh, project timeline for not just the Three Mile Creek portion, but also Twelve Mile Creek, which will include, of course, Langen Park. So all of this is in the works. It's really, really exciting. We've been talking about this for years. It just takes a long time to get going and get the money in-house to get these projects working. But really excited about this portion, and here we are, uh, in my district. I also just want to remind everyone that, um, eventually resurfacing is coming to our district. Most everybody's already had their streets resurfaced as part of this, this twenty-eighteen, uh, resurfacing phase. Unfortunately, uh, we are still waiting for, um, Spire to finish some work that has been ongoing for a long time. Uh, it will be finished soon. The latest is that we should see resurfacing equipment begin in District Seven about March. So, um, we'll try to keep everyone posted so that you know when to see the equipment, and, uh, we'll be expecting to see those streets getting resurfaced, because it's always very important. Resurfacing is very important to all of our residents, and we just want to make it happen as quickly as possible. But we don't want to have to go back in and have utilities, dig up our freshly resurfaced streets in order to do, do their work, which is why we're, uh, allowing, of course, Spire to finish their project before we start ours. That is it from District Seven. Mr. Chair, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, a number of organizations, um, decided to use, uh, Dr. King's birthday as a time to give back. And that, that was the, uh, organizing cleanups all over the city, and that will be a major cleanup effort on Saturday, starting at eight-thirty at the Tricentennial Park. We're gonna honor Dr. King by picking up trash, uh, at the Tricentennial Park. So I'm asking all of the people who can meet me down at the Tricentennial Park at eight-thirty on Saturday, and we're gonna begin to pick up. I, I attended Dr. King's funeral. I went to Atlanta. I had to get a permission slip to do it, because they felt that there may be some riots in the city. So we had to get permission slips to go. So I did. I was able to, um, go to his, and attend his funeral. I, I was a member of an organization that, uh, was connected to, uh, his organization. Dr. King believed and stated, "Truth, though crutch to the earth, will rise again." "That right may often yield to might, but right will win." "That peace is not just the absence of war or tension, but true peace is the presence, presence of justice." And he called for justice to run down like water and righteousness as light as stream. With that said, if we have no opposition, note that any announcement from the, the man, if not, if we don't have any opposition, we're gonna close this meeting.